I would like to call to order the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, a regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. If you would, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you so much. Special welcome if you are watching at home and joining us. Thanks for tuning in tonight. We're glad you could be here with us. We will begin by, I'd like to read a statement. It says, "Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota directive residents to stay at home and guidance about limits being a person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic. This meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero-two-one. Meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphones or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which the board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute to the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their devices. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded and access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible." Thank you. If you would, and during this meeting, I would like to add also, just for record purposes, it's been hard for me to tell who's giving firsts and seconds. If you would, if you would say like, if you would like to make a motion, say, you know, so moved, and then your last name or your first name, just some indicator of who said it, so I can tell who said it. It's easier for Dawn to record it. So if you'd please do that, that'd be awesome. Sounds good? Alright, having said that, Laura, would you please proceed with the roll call?
Samurai? Mueller?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Granlund? Severson?
Here.
Palmer, here, and Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
Alright, thank you so much, Laura. I'd like to read our vision statement. It says, "Creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed." And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will move on to the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, and I'd like to start and ask for an approval of the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda.
Palmer, so moved.
Thanks, Laura. Second? That was Hala, second? Great. Any discussion on the agenda? Alright, Laura, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Samurai? Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis? Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Alright, thanks guys. Motion carries. We'll move on with the announcement. It says, "On February fifteenth, Monday, we'll have no school. On February sixteenth, Tuesday at five-thirty PM, we'll have a school board work session in the community room and via electronic means. On February twenty-third, which is a Tuesday, we'll have a seven PM school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. And on March ninth, also Tuesday at seven PM, we'll have another regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means." Moving on to correspondence, Superintendent Stenvik, do we have any correspondence tonight?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence tonight.
Alright, thank you. We'll go on to communications to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Do we have anyone at the district center tonight? Alright. And again, if you're watching this from home, you're welcome to email us or Superintendent Stenvik with any questions, concerns, or comments you might have. We look forward to hearing from you. Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report, school board minutes, and the treasurer's report. Can I get a motion to move the consent agenda forward?
So moved, Mueller.
Alright, Mueller, second?
Palmer, second.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, Laura, if you wouldn't mind a roll call vote, please?
Samurai? A Samurai?
We didn't hear that off there. Thank you, Hala.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis? Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Alright, motion carries. We will move on to the discussion items, reports, and information, beginning with reports from members of the board. So let's have, let's have Hala go first tonight. Alright, thank you, Hala. Move on to Molly.
Thanks, Natty. Mostly I've just watched, enjoyed watching the girls and boys' basketball teams, mostly via the online forums that are available. Just a shout out and thank you to those that are providing that for the parents in our district. I know it's much appreciated, not just by me, but lots of other people. Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Molly. We'll move on to Lorian.
Alright, since our last meeting, I attended the last week of the MSBA Annual Conference that was done online this year. So that was done three Thursdays in a row. I have to say, I really enjoyed that format of being able to attend all of the sessions that were available virtually. They did a really nice job making that into a virtual format. I also attended the chair meeting prior to this and have had conversations with parents.
Alright, thank you. And Laura?
Gotta mute myself. Well, I guess I had like, I have, I guess, three items of note. I attended the monthly nine-sixteen board meeting. Probably one thing that I thought was of interest, and I have spoken of it before, but we got a little bit more detail, was about the Mobile Education Center that was launched mid-January. And what it is, is it provides critical services, like assessments. And this unit, this mobile unit, will actually go out to be able to provide mental health assessments, diagnostics, behavior interaction, behavior intervention sessions, and parental coaching, and then some unique circumstances regarding innovative problem-solving solutions. Well, that's what my brochure here says. But anyway, it is pretty exciting, and it's a really nice, it's got a, like a classroom on the inside, interactive Wi-Fi, and it's going to be able to definitely assist, especially with these special education students, being able to make sure that they're getting services, even if they cannot be in the classroom setting. So that was pretty exciting. I also now the liaison to the, from nine-sixteen to the nine-sixteen Foundation Board. So I did attend that meeting last week, and they were mostly discussing how they were going to be able to use some more of the donations to fund other types of student needs rather than strictly educational, which was very exciting, you know, maybe some food assistance and so on. So I thought that was pretty exciting. And then I attended the policy subcommittee meeting just prior to this meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. I appreciate that. I, for my report, I also went to the chair meeting with Lorian and Superintendent Stenvik and the policy subcommittee meeting with Laura before this meeting. I was also able to attend a swim meet virtually, a couple of them actually, which was again fun, and again thankful for the technology in the athletic department who is doing that for us and allowing spectators to participate in a safe way. I had an exciting meeting with Dawn, and yeah, I'm serious about this, about Board Book. She showed me some of the features, and it's been encouraging to see all that we can do with the new premium Board Book. So look forward to sharing with more of those with you, maybe in a future work session, and seeing how we can better utilize that tool, get our money's worth out of that tool, because there's a lot that it's capable of doing. And then also attended the AMSD meeting, which, Association of Metropolitan School Districts. And probably the biggest thing of note was that we had the chair of both the State House and Senate Education Committees there to share. It was interesting to hear kind of their different perspectives on what their priorities are, funding, and different things like that. I believe Superintendent Stenvik, that was in the Friday packet, right? That was in Board Book?
Yep.
Or in the, in the Friday packet. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, you can see some more about that. But it's definitely really interesting. And they also gave us a tour of their website, which has a lot of helpful tools about their legislative platforms and different things that are open to both board members who are, who are not, who don't regularly attend their meetings, but also to people in the public. So look for Association of Metropolitan School Districts here in the state of Minnesota. If you want to go and see kind of their legislative priorities that they're lobbying for here at the state level. Alright, Superintendent Stenvik, do you have an update for us tonight?
Madam Chair, yes, I do. Today, Director Hennekenz and I began our round of presentations to staff on the financial forecast. So we'll be visiting, we visited two staff meetings today. We'll be visiting all schools and the district center to provide that information. Another exciting item is that a team of high school and district staff are working to plan a virtual version of the New York Study Seminar. So of course, more information will be sent to choir and advanced art students as it becomes available. But while this spring, the, we can't load up the buses and drive out to New York, we are, it's incredible that we will be able to provide some of those similar and same experiences in a virtual platform here on campus, or virtually, via Zoom, of course. And Columbia Heights has partnered with six other metro school districts, seeking a grant from the Minneapolis Foundation for funding for the Culturally Relevant School Leadership Academy. So I'm pleased to announce that the group did receive the MAX Award of seventy-five thousand dollars, which will greatly offset the cost of this three-day Leadership Academy. We are in the planning stages, but we are looking to hold the academy in August for our administration. It's very robust training on equity, equity and leadership. Of course, we're continuing to meet weekly on COVID-19-related topics. Currently, we are trying to get as many staff access to the vaccinations as possible. And finally, it really has been wonderful to have some of our students back on campus for in-person learning. We are looking forward to safely bringing other grade levels onboard as planned. Thank you.
Alright, thanks so much. We will move on to the Building Vision scorecard, sorry, Building Vision card with Highland Elementary, and I would like to welcome Executive Director Yanbue and Principal Jankie, right? That's how we say that? Jankie, yes. So the A is like, not a heart A. Yes, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Michelle.
Can you give me permission to share my screen?
Dawn or Mike, will you do that?
Do you have it now?
Alright, thank you. Excellent. Madam Chair, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the board, I am here with Principal Jankie from Highland Elementary School to present the Highland Building Vision Card. The mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. The core values represented in our presentation tonight are all of our core values, which are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This is an informational update and no governance at this time. This strategic roadmap will focus on our strategic direction C, which is improving our daily interaction with students, families, and community. And with that, I will pass it on to Principal Jankie.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenvik. It is my pleasure to present Highland's strategic plan this evening. I'm going to start with strategic direction A, improving our students' experience and school climate. Just a little bit of background about the color coding. I've chosen Islander Blue as the fiscal year twenty, and then you'll also see notation of where Highland was at in nineteen as a comparison note. So again, with, we're fortunate enough to provide professional development on district in-service days around health and wellness. And so we have a hundred, an opportunity for a hundred percent of teachers to participate in, or actually licensed staff to participate in that training. We were well over ninety-one percent, close to a hundred percent this year with Highland teachers. Teacher absences for personal illness. There was a pretty significant increase in the number of teacher absences last year. I think we increased by forty-five days. So you'll notice a pretty drastic drop in that area. Attendance days, even though it is not marked due to the measure not being released by MDE, it is something that Bando and I talk about at each one of our monthly meetings, and it is a success for Highland. We're at about ninety-five percent average daily rate of attendance, which is, it's a strength for us every year. The mental health screener that is given each spring affords our students the opportunity to be selected for check-in, check-out with the social worker and administrative team, big brothers, big sisters, or also to recommend for mental health service through Lee Carlson. Lee Carlson has continued to see students on campus even through COVID. So students have had the opportunity to meet with a therapist from Lee Carlson on site. We have a significant amount of professional development at Highland and also district-wide around trauma. So we were at Vision here. I also, or I'm sorry, at progressing for this year. I wanted to note, one of the reasons why we have fewer than last year was Highland did focus last school year and then this fall on innocent classroom, which is really taking the staff from, it includes pieces of trauma, but more into equity. So under school climate, out-of-school suspensions, just a note for this data. And this data from nineteen to twenty is from March to March, so it does not include the pandemic months in the calculation. But we are at Vision for both out-of-school suspensions as well as in-school suspensions, with no students obviously suspended and/or in-school suspension during the pandemic time. Strategic direction B, improving our students' academic achievement and college and career readiness. Because of the pandemic, the use of personalized learning obviously has increased significantly. We have daily use of Zoom and CSO every day with our students and staff members. Many students in Google Classroom and other personalized learning. So we are at Vision here. Fast data, we had approximately forty-five percent of our students meeting the growth target from fall to winter. So it is just a small period of time. Math fact data, the last data point that we have was for third quarter of last school year. We did have sixty-nine percent of our students meeting their math fact targets at that point. So on, on track toward progressing in that area. In communications, improving our daily interactions with students, families, and community. We are working, all three elementary schools have a focus on trying to get parents signed up for ParentView. In the past, this had not been a focus of the elementary schools, but with the need to mail report cards, we're trying to find a method to save postage. So we are continuing to send home information to parents about how to sign up for ParentView, as well as videos that we've posted that allow parents to watch the video and have instruction on how to sign up. At Highland, we were at approximately a hundred and fifty students signed up after the first quarter, which wasn't enough to mail home second quarter report cards, but we're hopeful to increase in that area. Number of principal communications with families is well over twenty. I attempt to communicate at least weekly, sometimes bi-weekly, with families, whether that's through Blackboard and/or I do do school-wide CSO announcements as well. The percent of our families enrolled in CSO currently is about ninety-five percent. We do have many families checking every day because of online learning, and the percent of teachers using CSO is one hundred percent at Highland. So continuing on with improving our daily interactions with students, family, and community. Events promoting academic achievement and community building, family engagement have continued this school year. So even though we can't have in-person events, we have hosted events that have been virtual since the start of the school year. So we are continuing to hold virtual events when possible. We did hold a virtual kindergarten registration night, EL family night. All of our open house and curriculum opportunities for teachers in the fall were done as virtual events. As I said before, the number of families visiting CSO is very strong right now because of the need to get information for online learning. So we have families connecting basically daily with CSO. Our percentage of families participating in conferences was pretty consistent with what we've had in the past. We had about eighty-five percent of our families participate with Zoom conferences this fall. We have conferences coming up tomorrow, I'm sorry, next week for Highland, so we'll see where our percentage has been. Parents returning mandatory forms, again, we're doing quite well here. We did get most of our forms returned for students to use the internet because of, it's tied to getting a device, and all students basically need a device. We also had a pretty good number of our families return the free and reduced lunch form, although it took quite a bit of coaxing to get most of those back. Athletics and activities participation, so students participating in Encore. Our spring participation, our winter and spring participation until we let out last year was very strong. I would say fall opportunity this fall was less. We had less students participate than normal. Again, I think with the amount of time that students are spending online, a parent's choice to add on to the day was probably, for a lot of families, the deciding factor on whether they wanted their child in Encore. Strategic direction D, securing and effectively managing resources. So we, as you probably have heard from the other principals, we do have opportunities for grade levels and departments across the district this year because of our schedule that we have common planning and common PLCs. So we have excellent opportunity to have the majority, if not all, of our staff members participating in, across even the district, planning and PLC time. The percent of teachers daily using grade level curriculum has increased, I would say, pretty significantly with the use of power standards and really focusing our instruction on power standard through online learning this fall. An annual variation from budget was less than three percent last school year. So moving on to school goals, at our Title One meeting this fall, the Highland Teachers Administration and parents involved selected three areas for school goals. A literacy goal, which we're going to be measuring using FAST. So looking at our scores from fall two thousand and twenty to spring two thousand and twenty-one, and specifically looking at the students who are in the high-risk category for not meeting the spring benchmark will decrease by eight percent building-wide as measured by the FAST literacy assessment. And we're looking for the same decrease in math, again, focusing on students in the group of high risk for not meeting the benchmark. The reason why we focused in these two areas was really to put emphasis, while we're in distance learning, on intervention. So the teachers not only having strong whole-group lessons, but also providing interventions in literacy and math. Two, one area in literacy that we'll, we still continue to use even in distance learning is press reading interventions. And in math, we still continue to use Dream Box as a math intervention. The last school goal is to gain a more diverse representation at PTO meetings, evening events, and conferences. And the three areas that we are focusing on, we're providing workshops for parents on topics of interest. And again, that comes from survey data from last spring. Our Family Involvement Committee surveyed our families. They're going to do that again this year. So finding out what, what are they interested in learning about. Communication going out in multiple language, especially Somali, as the number of our Somali families has increased significantly. And then also, the last and kind of thing that we didn't think about, but has really aided in a more diverse representation at PTO meeting, is the use of Zoom. We're just finding that families are more willing to join a meeting via a Zoom option. And so in talking to my PTO president as we're planning for next year, we're going to continue the Zoom option regardless of whether or not we're able to have face-to-face meetings because it does reach out to more of our families. And so this is just kind of a broad-spectrum look. We, I have a few photos from our EL family night that happened last year. So you can see the smiling faces of people being able to come into school, and then a different version of our world of, you can't tell underneath their mask, but both of these children are smiling, excited about being back in person. It's one of the, probably the best things that I've seen in a long time, is greeting the kindergartners coming at the front door who are being dropped off. And you can tell they're smiling by the expression on their face because they're so excited to be there. So it has been, as Director Stenvik, or Superintendent Stenvik said, a great opportunity as we're having students come back into the building and just kind of going slow to go fast, but things have been going very well. Questions?
Alright, Director Yanbue, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. I'm looking for hands, sorry. Now I can see your smiling faces. Any questions? It's kind of fun to go third of the elementary schools because all our questions kind of like got out. You know, we can't even, you even gave us the pinpoint accuracy on the suspension dates. So all our previous questions are absorbed, so it's not that we are disinterested in Highland. Last one?
I also have an opportunity to go after school has started in person, at least for some learners. So it's, that is exciting, and you know, we hope to continue to bring back more and more students as we progress through this school year. So we're very excited about that.
Alright, well, thank you so much for joining us, to both of you, Director Yanbue and Principal Jankie. Now I know how to say it.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, have a great night.
Thanks.
Alright, we're going to move on to the North Park rebranding, and I'll again welcome Director Yanbue and also Director Tuckrell, Directors Tuckrell and Stunkel, and Principal Sossick.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik.
It's me first.
Yeah, you first, but I-
That's okay, though. You did it. You're good. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of- Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. As mentioned in the introduction, I'm here tonight with Principal Sossick from North Park, Executive Director of Educational Services, Director Niangway, Director Stunkel, our Director of Communications and Community Education. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner all belong and all succeed. And as we think about the North Park rebranding, it really did incorporate all of our core values. And we are here tonight as an informational presentation, and will be returning on February 23rd seeking approval for the rebrand of North Park. And with that, I'm going to pass it back to Principal Sossick.
Thanks, Tara. So why are we proposing a new name? Why are we rebranding ourselves? Really, it's an outstanding opportunity to do so. With the support, the wonderful support of our community and the hard work of our school board, we were able to pass a bond referendum a couple of years ago. And so we've really, just about every square inch of our building has been touched in some way and improved. So the timing is fantastic. And to begin this process, under the supervision of Superintendent Kelly last year, a Blue Ribbon Advisory Task Force was created. And they sifted through information that was gathered through survey from staff members across the district, staff members at North Park in particular, community members and parents at North Park. And overwhelmingly, the decision for a direction at North Park was STEM, and that makes a lot of sense. It fits quite snugly with the direction that we've been going for many years now. And as you recall, there was board approval June 29th of last year. And so if you look at the remodeled building and grounds, it really fits quite nicely into a STEM profile. I'm especially excited. I've gotten to enjoy the inside a lot. I'm especially excited to get into the out-of-doors in the spring and summer once those edible gardens and wetlands really get up and going. And it is our hope, in fact, our expectation, that the new curb appeal is going to spark curiosity and really attract our new families. And we're going to back it up with a new brand and a more vigorous move into the direction of STEM. But we're going to maintain the building culture that we've had at North Park for many years and that we've really grown to be proud of. So where have we been since June? Last fall, we put together a messaging task force that was made up of North Park staff. We had nine staff people that really examined, our process was really examining who we are. You know, we started with that now-dated Simon Sinek video of finding your why. And so we spent an awful lot of time just making lists of the things that as adults, as teachers, as staff people, get us out of bed in the morning, the things that we're most proud of, that we do for kids at North Park. And that really helped us build a lot of context. And one of the things that we concluded is that although we're going to go into a STEM direction, there's an awful lot that we do at North Park. And we don't want to sell any of those other things short, such as our arts programming is fantastic, for one. And so we didn't want to sell anything short in our message while still emphasizing STEM approach. So ultimately, what is important to us, I mean, it's stopping at nothing to support our students to become themselves. That is, while I know every parent wants their child to go to a school that really has that message to themselves, it's really something that on the task force, we felt like we needed the opportunity to prove. That's not necessarily the message that's going to get parents into the building because I would hope that any school would be able to claim this. And I know that when parents and families enter our building, that they feel this. And that's what helps folks to stick around at North Park. So one of the things that we learned, and actually, the one, North Park, the one member of our task force who was not from North Park was Hannah Stark, who is the media arts teacher at the high school. She's been in Valley View. I believe she's perhaps at the middle school also. And she's just outstanding with marketing, digital marketing in particular. And one of the things that she explained to us when we were caught in a rut was the difference between an internal message and an external message. And we really spent a couple of meetings really focusing on our internal message, you know, just really defining who we are. But that's not necessarily the message that you're going to use externally. So our internal message, when we just looked at all the things that we think are most important about what our children experience at North Park, is that we value leveraging our care for our students, our passion for innovation, and our pioneering spirit to engage the whole child with relevant learning through a lens of equity. Now, that's a mouthful. That's certainly not a marketing tagline, but it is our internal message that we have to look at every now and then just to remind us of who we are and what's important to us. Which left us with the task of external messaging. So really, the point of our external message is to create a very short means of communication that honestly, families who are shopping for schools can look at and pique their interest enough that they'll come and take a look at us. Because I'm confident, and honestly, I always have been, even before our building was improved, that if, when we get families to come and tour our school, nine times out of 10, they stay. And so really, that's our biggest challenge right now, is just getting families in the door so that we can talk to them and tell them a little bit about who we are. And so currently, the task force, the next piece of work that the task force is doing is to draft an external message for families that are looking to select a school for their students. And we've already gotten a really good start, and we're hoping to finish that in the next week or so. So this is the recommendation of a proposed new name for North Park. The one thing that every person on the committee agreed upon quite strongly was that we needed to keep North Park, the name of North Park, because it's our opinion that we have created a reputation, especially with the culture that's within our building. And we're quite proud of that, and we're proud of that name. However, we do a little bit more than just school. And the word innovation seemed to really be an excellent umbrella term that covered the vast majority of what students experience at North Park. And we were very particular about the word "for." I mean, it might look like the most innocuous word in the title there, but there was some debate between using "of" and "for," and we settled on "for" because it's a more active word, and it tells us what our students are doing. Whereas "of" sounds like something that's already happened. And we definitely wanted activity to be in our title. So the governance piece will be on February 23rd. We'll be returning to the board to seek approval for the name change. We'll probably have a little bit more information on some, on a tagline and some more well-developed external message. I just learned from Director Stunkel today that we are going to be working on some marketing videos, and we're going to be engaging with the same person that helped us with the Green Ribbon video. We did an outstanding job. And there are a lot of other ideas around marketing. We're really, we were putting our full energies into this so that we can do justice to all of the trust that the community has put in us. So anybody have any questions? Look at those pictures.
Any questions? Laura, I see you're unmuted.
Yes, I am. I wasn't sure if I should just speak up or wait for you.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. I'm really excited about all the great things that are happening over there, have happened and continue to happen. And I'm really glad you're keeping the North Park name because I, otherwise, my first thought was name change. It was going to say, you changed it just because you're not going to hear me say, what about North Park?
I don't want to stop hearing that. That might be the reason we didn't change it.
Oh, okay. I'll take it. Thank you. Thank you. I really look forward to getting a tour of the building when we get students back in there. And I'm just so incredibly excited about what's going to be happening in the future here for our kids. Thank you.
So am I. Thanks, Laura.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much for swinging by, all the directors at all. And Principal Sossick, we're thankful for your presentation. And we'll see you on the 23rd, right?
Yes, you will.
You're back.
Yes, you will.
See you then. Thank you. All right. Pardon me, I'm just switching between Zoom and my notes. All right. We will now move on to the diversion committee update with Director Niangway.
I'm just going to find my next slide.
I can relate to that. There's a lot to look at.
Yeah, all right. I think I'll be ready in just a second. Yes. Good evening again, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the board. I am here to give you an update on the diversion committee media update. The mission of Columbia Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. The core values represented in this presentation tonight are excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, and courage. This is an information update, and no governance at this time. The diversion committee and the work that we've been doing in the district has one goal and five strategies. The first three strategies have been met, and we have strategy number four and number five, which are ongoing. Strategy four is key to the work that we've been doing in the district because we are providing and expanding professional development opportunities for school personnel in the areas of cultural competency. And strategy number five is to obtain qualitative engagement data and input from parents, students, teachers on issue related to discipline. And these two strategies are ongoing because they allow us to report back to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, and they allow us to have monthly meeting with the district discipline assessment team as we engage in conversation about supporting teachers or supporting students and families. So the DDA, as we call it, the district discipline assessment team, its purpose, when it was created, was to reduce disproportionality in our out-of-school suspension among race and instructional setting, which is special education or general education. So the data we report here is only out-of-school suspension. So we, after we're done with the year, believe it or not, and in terms of preliminary data, there are no suspensions in this first half of the year. It's no surprise, children are home with their parents. They're behaving on Zoom. The issue that we deal with there is sometimes engagement, but no suspension. In terms of disparities, we've seen a decrease in disparities over the year since the creation of the DDA. And we know that there is still some work that needs to be done. And so depending on how the rest of the year will go, we may or may not have some data to report on. So we have been doing some work, though, this year with the district discipline assessment team. And I won't bore you by reading you what we've done each month, but each month we've met, we've had some deep conversation about how to support students in the virtual world, how to help teachers continue to build strong and meaningful relationship and check in with students. But I'll just go back to October. When we started in October, we had to remind ourselves with the expectations of the DDA. We discussed some unfinished business from 2019, 2020, which were conducting a stakeholder survey to assess the knowledge and understanding of the work that we're doing around discipline, around the Students' Right and Responsibility Handbook. And that was doing it with students, with parents, and also with the Special Education Parent Advisory Group. So we had conducted some survey with some groups, but families and the Special Education Advisory Group, we had not done that. So that's the unfinished business that we're continuing. So we have moved forward with that conversation. We've developed a stakeholder survey that is being conducted as we speak, and by the end of February, we should have some data. In December, we reviewed the draft of the stakeholder survey, and we decided to launch it at the beginning of January because we did not want to rush into it. And one strong conversation that we've had on the team is that even though on October 1st, 2021, we will submit our final report to the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, we are committed to doing this work with fidelity for many years to come in our district. And so the most recent meeting that we had was January, where even though we don't have suspension, we wanted to check in and see our school doing, if there are any suspensions, and there were no suspensions. And we also checked on, the other data we looked at was the students who, you know, have more than 15 days. So we've looked at some data. More importantly, we decided to focus on studying one concept from the book that I have on the right side. And the concept is the concept of becoming a warm demander. In short, it's a person who cares about colleagues and students, who is not afraid of giving constructive feedback, and who builds strong relationships and supports the students to show them that they have an adult who cares and they're able to achieve. And so that is the concept that we've been focusing on and will continue to focus on until the end of the year. And so it's important for me to say that the data and information discussed at the DDA meeting is presented at every E12 administrative team meeting each month. I mentioned that one of our strategies was providing relevant professional development. And this is a summary of some of, not all, the professional development that our staff is participating in. But these are directly and relevant to a cultural, relevant, and critical responsive teaching pedagogy. So you can see that Principal Jenke mentioned the Innocent Classroom at Highland. We are still doing that at Highland. Equity Book Club, just like the board is engaging Equity Book Club. The district white staff is also engaged in that. The work of PLCs, of which you've heard. And the great job that teaching and learning has done is creating some PD pathways with a limit of about 25 to 30 people. And in that, there is a sample that I have down here where we have responsive classroom, ways of being, EL best practices for all teachers, and then teaching all students, understanding and accommodation for modification. Are there any questions?
Looking for hands. Lauren, there it is. Let's see that. That one was obvious. Thanks.
Yeah, just wanted to touch briefly, I appreciate just all of the information that you presented. Thank you. I think this is something that's very important to the board, as well as to everybody who's working in the district. Can you talk a little bit about your thoughts or preparations as we bring students? Can you talk a little bit about your thoughts or preparations as we bring students back? And kind of continue to work through this, knowing that we haven't had many of our students on campus for the last year?
Yeah, you know, it's, thank you for the question. It's a great question. At our last district discipline assessment team meeting. One of the questions that we reflected on is, what is one strategy? That is effective when you work with students in person? So there is about eight members on the team. And the goal was to share so that each person will walk away with seven strategies that they can take back to their school building and be able to share those with teachers. So that when students are coming back in person, we are focusing first on providing and meeting the needs. If you think of muscle hierarchy of needs and then support them to learn better. And so we believe that those approaches, which are more personable, will allow us to connect and allow students to be successful in the classroom, rather than us being interested in suspending or talking about this. So that's one example of what we've discussed on the team.
Thank you. I just can't, I can't imagine the challenge that our, our staff and our teachers will face as students have been out of the school routine for so long. I think of my own kids who maybe not crawl out of bed until 8:25 and are doing school in their pajamas and laying on the couch some days. I don't know. So just knowing that there are some challenges that we face, that the team will face as the students are trying to find the routine and understand expectations again.
Yeah, thanks Lauren. Other questions or thoughts? Alright, well, thank you so much Director Niangway. You've had a busy night with presentations. I haven't even looked ahead to see what's next. Is that, no?
I am next.
On the calendar? Are you on the calendar crew? Alright, well, keep it up. Keep up the good work. Thank you so much. And we will move on to the 2021, 2022 school calendar. And on my thing, it just says Director Bennett, but if you're there, Bono, go for it.
Just pull up the, hang one second.
I'm glad it's not just me. It's a little bit validating that everyone else has to take time to toggle between things and find things. So I feel affirmed. So I don't know if Superintendent Stenvik told you guys to do this, but it's helping me a little bit.
All the sharing screen, I get confused.
Yeah.
Okay, let's see if it works now. There we go.
Alright.
Okay. Chair Silverson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2021, 2022 school calendar. It's an information item tonight with board action at the next board meeting. So to begin with our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And the core values, I concentrated on tonight was collaboration. It's a committee that does come together to work on this and respect, since we have people from different grade levels, different buildings. We have to hash out when spring break's going to be, when conferences are, so they don't all fall the same night and everybody on the team worked very well together. So the calendar committee, we met twice. Principals are asked to invite a parent representative. And building a district staff are also on the committee. So we have everybody from early childhood all the way up through the high school. There's a whole list of calendar assumptions that we go off of, but really what it comes down to is we want to develop a calendar that's in the best interest of our students, while still adhering to our contractual obligations that we have. So some of the key highlights, school will start after Labor Day. Which is similar to other years. Winter break is scheduled for December 23rd through December 31st. Spring break, we took a vote of the committee because it was between two weeks and March 21st and March 25th worked for the majority of the group. Including activities, we look at testing, AP testing. And then graduation is scheduled for June 9th, 2022. And I did put a copy of the draft calendar in the board packet. And then again, it'll be brought forward as an information item on February 23rd. So there was no big concerns with the committee. Some years are harder than other years to put the calendar together, but this was not one of those years.
Alright, thanks. Any questions? Laura, you're unmuted again. Do you have a question?
Yeah, actually I do. When does, when do we usually expect MCA testing?
I don't have the answer for that one. I know Tara Tucker was a part of the committee and so she looks at all the testing dates. And tells me that I'm okay with the spring break or not okay with the spring break, so.
Okay, yeah, I know, I know sometime, in some years past, we were kind of concerned about having, you know, practice, you know, preparing, having a spring break and then coming back and doing the testing. And that's not always in the best interest. So I know that kind of falls in March-ish if I remember correctly. But I could be wrong.
I see Superintendent Stenvik's hand raised.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for that question, Member Palmer. The, the Minnesota Department of Education provides us with a long window for MCA testing. And then we were able to pick and select the dates within that long window.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, there you go. And Director Bennett, I, yeah, it's hard for you to remember all those details, so it's totally fine. Any other questions? Alright, well, thanks so much for all your hard work on that. Even though it was a relatively simple year, I'm sure it was a lot of work to put together. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you.
And, and Bono is right. I would like to welcome back Executive Director Niangway for building capacity.
Good evening, Madame Silverson and members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. Yes, tonight I was on for quite a few tasks and this is my last one and you've enjoyed every one of them. So I'm here tonight to bring an informational item. And this is the building capacity. For several years, our 10th grade at the high, at Columbia Heights High School has been closed for open enrollment. And this year, as you have heard at previous board meetings, we are experiencing a declining enrollment. Dr. Anakin had provided some data at a couple of the previous meetings showing that we're down 163 students overall in the district. And so anticipating that next year, we may be back in person. We are very much interested in ensuring that we bring in enough students in our school district. So 10th grade usually has about a total of 290 students. And we've seen a few drop as this year has continued. So in preparation of those ninth graders will be moving into 10th grade. It will be important for us to open up 10th grade because we would like to do as much work as we can to bring in enough enrollment at all the grades in our district. So I will be back again on the 23rd requesting the board to open up 10th grade. At this time, I will take any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Alright, hearing none. Well, thank you so much for your high participation tonight, Director Niangway. We appreciate it. Alright, we'll move on then to action items. Our first one is the Northeast State Bank Corporate Authorization Resolution, and that's Director Hennigan's.
Thank you Chair Silverson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. So the, what the resolution that we have this evening before you recommended for approval is with Northeast Bank, the bank that we do most of our business with. And you know, we've, in the organizational meeting, you know, we are reached shortly thereafter. We usually have, if we have a new clerk or a new treasurer, we have signatures because those signatures go on our checks. And the bank does check those signatures. And they check those signatures by these additional forms that we fill out. And one of which is a, is a resolution that goes before the board that authorizes or gives authorization to specific signatures. So historically, that's the superintendent, the finance director, and then the clerk and the treasurer for the board. So this resolution is, is, if we make changes, would be a yearly resolution. I think last year, it came a little late. I can't, I think it came in the July board meeting. So we did actually get a call from the bank and ask us if we had updates. And we had already received this form and we were already in the process. But, so it is something we need to, we need to move forward with as soon as possible to get updated for the bank.
Alright, I'm gonna read the, read the resolution and then we'll ask, I'll ask for a motion after that. Alright, so corporate authorization resolution. The corporation named in, on this resolution, resolution resolves that one, the financial institution is designated as a depository for the funds of the corporation and to provide other financial accommodations indicated in this resolution. Two, this resolution shall continue to have effect until its press written notice of its rescission or modification has been received and recorded by the financial institution. Any and all prior resolutions adopted by the Board of Directors of Corporation and certified to the financial institution as governing the operation of this corporation's account are in full force and effect until the financial institution receives and acknowledges an express written note of its revocation, modification or replacement. Any revocation or a modification or replacement of a resolution must be accompanied by documentation satisfactory satisfactory to the financial institution establishing the authority for change. Three, the signature of an agent in this resolution is conclusive evidence of their authority to act on behalf of the corporation. Any agent, so long as they act in a representative capacity as an agent of the corporation, is authorized to make any and all other contract agreements, stipulations and orders which they may deem advisable for the effective exercise of powers indicated in this resolution from time to time with the financial institution, subject to any restrictions on this resolution or otherwise agreed to in writing. Four, all transactions, if any, with respect to any deposits, withdrawals, discounts and borrowings by or on behalf of the corporation with the financial institution prior to the adoption of this resolution are hereby ratified, approved and confirmed. Five, the corporation agrees to the terms and conditions of any account agreement properly opened by any agent of the corporation. The corporation authorizes the financial institute at any time to change the corporation or to charge the corporation for all checks, drafts and other orders for the payment of money that are drawn on the financial institution, so long as they contain the required number of signatures for this purpose. Six, the corporation acknowledges and agrees that the financial institution may furnish at its discretion automated access devices to agents of the corporation to facilitate those powers authorized by this resolution and other resolutions in effect at the time of issuance. The term automated access device includes, but is not limited to credit cards, automated teller machines, ATMs and debit cards. Seven, up seven, if you're watching at home. The corporation acknowledges and agrees that the financial institution, institution may rely on alternative signature and verification codes issued to or obtained from the agent named on this resolution. The term alternative signature and verification codes includes, but is not limited to facsimile signatures on file with the financial institution, personal identification numbers and digital signatures. If a facsimile signature specimen has been provided on this resolution or that are filed separately by the corporation with the financial institution from time to time, the financial institution is authorized to treat the facsimile signature as the signature of the agents, regardless of by whom or by what means a facsimile signature may be affixed, so long as it resembles the facsimile signature specimen on file. The corporation authorizes each agent to have custody of the company's private key used to create a digital signature and to request issuance of a certificate listing the corresponding public key. The financial institution shall have no responsibility or liability for authorized use of alternative signatures and verification codes unless otherwise agreed in writing. Alright, that was a mouthful. And for some reason, I couldn't stop saying revolution when it said resolution. But I would like a motion to move this forward, please.
Palmer, so moved.
Alright, and a second?
Mueller, second.
Alright, any discussion on this? Alright, hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote, please Laura.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Silverson?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Alright, great. Motion carries or resolution passes. Thanks Brian, we appreciate it. We will move on to the board policy's second reading. So description is, we sorry, I need to find the motion. Is there a motion on here? Sorry guys. My computer's loading. Alright, at the January 26th meeting, the school board was presented with the following policies for review or approval of new policies. Board approval will be sought at tonight's meeting for policy number 514, the bullying prohibition policy. 601, school district curriculum and instruction goals. 607, organization of grade level. And 612.1, development of parental involvement policy for Title I programs. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
Mueller, so moved.
Lewis, second.
Alright, so sorry, I gotta write this down in my notes. Lauren and Molly?
Yep.
Alright, any discussion on this? I guess the question I always ask to Superintendent Stenvik, have we heard from any members of the community or district about any of these policies?
Madam Chair, no, we have not.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Silverson?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. We will move on, we're going to move now to closed session. In accordance to Minnesota Statute 13D.03, the school board will meet in closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies. Alright, we are coming back from closed session for negotiation strategy, which we had in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.03. Now we're returning to open session in order to discuss four topics. I guess I'll start first. Just a reminder that next week at our work session, we'll be discussing the last third of our book. So be sure to read it. I know mine's out on my coffee table, wanting some attention from me. So make sure you get an opportunity to finish up your reading for next week. And then if you're me, remember to bring your own book with you. So, yeah.
I did want to cut, one item to note, just it wasn't under the announcement. So to add that the community engagement session will happen virtually at 5:45 on February 23rd.
Okay, so prior to this meeting, people can find the link. And the link will be available on the school district website somewhere?
Yep, and yeah, there'll be some social media postings and advertisements.
Great. Other board topics?
So just a reminder, who's going to be on the February 23rd one?
That will be Molly and myself. Both of us actually have a birthday that week. So we're hoping that you virtually bring cupcakes to the community engagement session.
Is that like a gif? I send you a gif of someone blowing out a candle or something like that?
Yep, sounds good. Those, those, those will be welcomed at the community engagement session for the two of us celebrating our birthdays that week.
Yep, alright. Well, happy pre-birthday.
Thank you.
Alright, hearing no others, we will Alright, hearing no others, we will, let me look at my clock, adjourn tonight's meeting at 8:21 PM.